Right, okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the July Executive Board. Very pleased to welcome you to the meeting today. Could we go through the formal parts of the agenda, please, Gerard? Item one.
Thank you, Chair. Appeals to confirm, Chair. There have been no appeals received for today's meeting.
Item two.
Exempt information, yes, Chair. Should the board be agreeable exempt Appendix One to Item Ten, which is the district heating phase three extension to the South Bank, is to be considered in private at the conclusion of the public part of this meeting?
Item three.
Late items, yes, Chair. With your agreement, a report entitled 'Update on the Coronavirus Pandemic Response and Recovery Plan', has been circulated to board members and published for consideration as Agenda Item Seven today.
And item four, does any member have disclosible pecuniary interest today?
No.
Okay, thank you. And item five, can we agree that the minutes of the previous meeting are an accurate record of that meeting? Okay, take silence as a yes. And just before we start the meeting, could I offer my congratulations to Leeds United? A really major achievement for the team, for the club, but also for the city. I think all of us recognise what we've been missing for the last 16 years and really delighted that through the different matches that were played over the weekend, that not only have we gained promotion, but we're also champions of the league, which is a great testament to the work that they've done over the past year. We had a very disappointing end of season last year, but it really is a great achievement and really very proud of the players, but also of Bielsa, the manager, who has really held them together in such a magnificent way this season. So we look forward to watching their success on the return to the premiership. With that, could we hand over to councillor Cooper, who is going to take us into Item Six in her portfolio? And we'll be welcoming our guests to the meeting. But I'd just like to say to Jason and Paul, a real welcome to the meeting and thank you for all the work that you have been doing on this subject. So if I could hand over to councillor Cooper, please.
Yes, thanks, Leader. And could I welcome Professor Jason Roach to the executive board meeting this afternoon, who is the professor who's conducted the independent review into the managed approach? I just want to say a couple of things before I hand over to Paul, because this really is about Professor Roach's independent review and the outcomes of that review. But I just wanted to say really that we committed to the residents and the community of Holbeck to conduct an independent review now. And so I'm really pleased to bring the outcome of that independent review to executive board for its consideration this afternoon. And I'm sure I'll answer questions once Professor Roach and Paul have given their pieces about the independent review. So Paul, can I hand over to you now first to introduce the context of the independent review, please?
Yeah, thanks very much, councillor Cooper, and good afternoon, everybody. So before I hand over to Jason, I'll just provide a little bit of context as a reminder of where we currently are with the managed approach. Street sex work has been taking place, as many of you know, in the Holbeck area of the city for probably the last 20 years or so. The managed approach was introduced in 2014, and it is, in essence, I suppose, a multi-agency partnership that features resources from Safer Leeds, from West Yorkshire Police, from the wider council, including the antisocial behaviour team, our CCTV capability, street cleansing, housing colleagues, health colleagues, and also commission services, particularly those that work to assist sex workers with their range of complex needs and support us in terms of doing that. The resources all work together in a managed way via governance arrangements at the different levels, and you'll all be familiar with the gold, silver, bronze levels, but all appropriately resourced, regularly attending, and supported by very robust weekly tasking arrangements, holding the partnership to account as best we can. The issues associated with street sex work are many and varied. Some obvious, particularly obvious to the local community, and some not so obvious. In summary, certainly before we introduced the managed approach, we were experiencing significant problems with women feeling ostracised, particularly those involved in street sex working, which created issues for us in terms of engaging with them and supporting them with what are very often very complex needs. Other issues were the lack of confidence of the street sex workers reporting incidents and issues to the police, which had the consequence of creating some additional problems. We had very low rates of women reporting being victimised. We had very low rates of intelligence, meaning that as a city, we had some real challenges even understanding and assessing the extent of the problem. And there are other associated issues that we know we need to be able to challenge. So for instance, the issue of organised crime and the impact that that can have on the issues. So the managed approach has evolved over a period of years. And in essence, the review that I'll introduce Jason to talk about in a second, will talk about what they have found in the last 12 months or so. In terms of the procurement exercise and the task of procuring Professor Roach and his team, just remind those on the call that on the 14th of November 2018, council asked for a review of the managed approach to be conducted, and a tender specification was developed, which was contributed by all professionals working on the arrangements, but also by community representation and also representation from the street sex working cohort. Four organisations expressed interest in the tender and all was scored, leading to two organisations being invited to a panel. And the panel again included physical representation from local community representatives and also a number of street sex workers working in Leeds. The panel assessed the two organisations. And as you now know, Huddersfield University emerged as the unanimous preferred bidder, and they were appointed to undertake the review. Perhaps at that point, I'll pause and offer Jason the opportunity to talk about the review, his methodology, and obviously some of the key findings and recommendations that have come from it. So over to you, Jason.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul, and thank you councillor Cooper. But can I just say it was a team effort? It wasn't all me. Don't get me wrong, I was the best thing in it, but it was very much a team effort. The team comprised of three professors and three senior lecturers in criminology and policing, which is quite unheard of for a bid of less than about, for a job of less than about a million pounds. So you may not be able to say kind of very often that you got a good deal, but you got a really good deal out of this one. I won't keep you too long because I know you've got a long, busy meeting. So I'll just sort of very quickly go through some of the main points and some of the main findings. It was easy in a sense, this job was easier than others in that we were given quite tight objectives and aims to evaluate, to look at, to review. That doesn't happen very often, so this one was, you know, this was really good. So we knew exactly what it was that we should be looking at. And they hadn't essentially changed from what we could see from the beginning of the managed approach in 2014. So we were asked to assess the progress made against these three objectives, which was, one, to reduce the prevalence of street-based sex working in Leeds. The second one was to reduce the problems caused by on-street sex working to residents and businesses which currently suffer from such nuisance. And the third one was to better engage with street sex workers to improve their safety and health with a view to enabling them to exit this way of life. We're also asked to look at, to seek and understand the views of a wide range of stakeholders, including residents, businesses, sex workers themselves, and professionals that are involved in supporting the managed approach and the police. And unlike some government sort of reviews, we were asked to make some recommendations, and so we have, so I'll come to them in due course. Methodological approach, well, as you can imagine, you can't just send out a survey or stop three people on the street and then say, look, what we found, that we had to be quite extensive. So we had to use lots of different types of research methods, which I won't bore you with the ins and outs of them. Firstly, we used focus groups. We did five focus groups. Three of them were resident orientated and two of them professionals and police orientated. That comprised of in total approximately 30 people across those residents and professional groups, et cetera. We also interviewed, we conducted 30 individual interviews with professionals, police, residents, representatives, et cetera, and 12 women on-street sex workers as well, which we're quite proud of getting their trust enough for them to take part in this. We also attended, well, I did mostly, Listening Well sessions, which I'm sure you're familiar with, so I won't go into what they were, and took data from those observations, et cetera. We had data from the dedicated line, which is the dedicated police line involved in policing the managed approach. So we looked at what complaints had come in and what the police had done, et cetera, et cetera. And then other data that was given to us of varying qualities from Safer Leeds police data down to voice of Holbeck data, to Save Our Eyes data, to a survey that was done at Ingram Road School with parents. So a mixed bag is what I'm trying to, is the picture I'm trying to paint here about lots of methods, lots of data, all sort of going into the mix of what we found when we analysed it and forming the basis of what we think, you know, what the recommendations are. So. If I was to summarise the key findings, which I'm doing on a, seems to be a regular basis, and they're getting smaller and smaller, the summaries now, so I must be, I must be getting better at it. The MA, when it was brought in, was quite a revolutionary and quite a radical approach to the policing, in particular of on-street sex work and the problems associated with it. Before that, and this goes for the rest of the country, not just in the Leeds area, it was very much about enforcement. It was an enforcement-led approach. It was about arresting people, fining people, which ironically, many of the women that were sex workers, when they got fined, had to go out more to pay the fine, the costs of the fine. So it was counterproductive. And up to 2014, as Paul said, reports and complaints by residents and by local businesspeople were going up, so something had to be done. Hence, this approach of looking at it from almost an adult protection type of perspective, where helping, supporting the women involved to exit or to be able to leave or be in a position to stand a better chance of leaving what they were doing in terms of on-street sex working and minimising the effects on the community. It has since, and I'll throw this in, it has since, and we say in the report, it has since kind of been adopted, not as the model for the other 43 forces around the country, but certainly its approach in the sense of supporting on-street sex workers and trying to help them exit, it certainly has kind of influenced many of the other approaches, well, many of the other attempts by police to minimise the problems. So it kind of forged the wave, if you like. It's also, there's other things. I mean, we found that in general, the problems have been reduced. The complaints by residents have reduced, particularly in the last 18 months to two years. Also found that the residents and Safer Leeds, in particular, and the police had come together a lot more about this, much more of a community-based problem. And now, you know, the solution lies with the community as well. So that was progressed as well. Maybe still a little bit more to go, but you know, it's light years away from where it was pre-2014. The Listening Well sessions have kind of done, have had a good effect on bringing, you know, groups of people together. There is no two sides in this. We learned that immediately, it's about 58 different sides. It's about bringing all these people together. On-street sex workers that we spoke to, spoke very highly of the managed approach. Some of them that we quote in the report were saying it basically saved their lives. Many of the professionals, in fact, all the professionals and police that we talked to had said it significantly improved their jobs and their support, and that they knew where the women are now, that they know where they are. They have a good relationship with them and they know that they can put in coordinated and joined-up packages in which to support them. Resourcing of the MA has improved exponentially since its introduction in 2014, particularly since 2016 and 2018, with its dedicated policing team since 2016, but fully kind of resourced in 2018, at the back end of 2018. And the dedicated line for reporting on-street sex work, there is nothing, no other area in Leeds that has a direct line like that to the police to report things. Another kind of positive was that there's been, we identified, and this came from the women themselves and from borne out in the police data as well, that there's been a steady increase in the reporting of crimes by on-street sex workers that are committed against them. Before 2014, there was hardly anything mentioned, and we know that it's one of the most dangerous things you could possibly think about doing and being engaged in. The beginning to, you know, the recent times have begun to, you know, report crimes of which they're the victims of as well. We also were asked to look at, well, what else is going on in the country? Is there anything likely managed approach? Is there other alternatives that are happening? We also looked at the literature, research literature, which, you know, didn't take very long because there isn't much on this specifically on the policing of on-street sex working. And what we did find, different models, if you like, and you'll hear models like the Nordic model mentioned, et cetera. They fit within a different legal framework and a different policing approach. They're totally different to Leeds and the UK. So we didn't find much utility from them, to be quite honest. And when I did ask the MPCC lead, the chief police officer, who has in his portfolio sex working, I asked him to send an email around for me to the 43 forces, asking what was going on. We only got eight replies. Now, I don't think that for one minute is that nobody's doing anything in the other forces. It's just, we only got eight replies. And what was coming back was very much like the managed approach. However, saying that, I'll say that now, one of the things we did find is that whatever approach you take to trying to reduce the problems of on-street sex working, it has to fit within the context of the area, of the place, of the history that you're trying to reduce those problems in. I'll give you an example. Liverpool, Merseyside and Hull have tried a similar approach, and they've tried to create a managed area, some still refer to as a zone, but a managed area. It didn't work because the on-street sex trade wouldn't move to those places, yeah? I think that what's, you know, helped most in the managed approach in Holbeck and Leeds was that it was there geographically beforehand, yeah? There was no moving involved, it was kind of working where it already was. And I think that, I can't kind of, I can't underplay that enough as an important point in kind of, in this approach and its effectiveness. Okay, so I will very quickly, I've already talked longer than I planned to. The MA, our review actually raised various questions. So I'll go through the questions that it raised, offer some kind of answers to it, and then very quickly, I'll talk about the recommendations that relate to it. But you all have the report, so I won't teach anyone to suck eggs. Should the MA continue was a big question. Well, overwhelmingly, we found yes. And the people we spoke to, and we spoke to all sorts of people, residents, group leaders, et cetera, overwhelmingly, the answer was yes. It needs to change in some ways, and, you know, the agreement on changes wasn't the same, wasn't as unequivocal as yes, it should stay by any means. But generally, people could see no other alternative that would promise to be more effective than the managed approach, yeah, in Holbeck and Leeds. But it was, going back to what Paul said before, the MA needs to continue to be fluid enough to be able to adapt to whatever comes its way. We finished data collection one week before COVID-19 lockdowns, basically, which could completely change the game, at least temporarily, maybe slightly forever. So I'm talking about, you know, what I'm talking about are funds before that. But things like that do come along, and development of the South Bank is happening. How is that going to affect the managed approach, et cetera? These things need to be thought out, hopefully in advance, less reaction and more sort of proactive. The second one was, does the MA succeed enough for the aim of better engaging with on-street sex workers to improve their safety and health with a view to enabling them to exit that way of life? To justify current funding levels was a big question, you know, that was asked. Unequivocally, professionals, police and many of the residents in fact said, well, yes. The sex workers themselves, of course, yeah, it does, that was unequivocal. What does the MA strategic aim of reducing the prevalence of street-based sex working actually refer to? We got confused about that, and so does everybody else. What do we mean by prevalence? Do we just mean about the numbers of women that are working? Do we mean the number of hours that the women are working? Do we, are we talking about its prevalence in the residential areas? And one of our recommendations is that perhaps we should be, you should be clearer about what you mean by prevalence, and then, you know, it's less ambiguous and less subject to perhaps misinterpretation. We also asked the question, was it time for Holbeck, the community, not necessarily the community representatives that we spoke to, but the community itself, to share some sort of responsibility for the MA? So they've come a long way, yeah, and they've moved a long way, and Safer Leeds and the camps and the police have moved a long way, come together. Should they actually have more responsibility for that? For example, in what it might metaphor, what it might change to or react to be in the future? So having a say about kind of where the MA may go, having said that it's fluid and it's, you know, it will change. That led to the recommendation that there should perhaps be a fully representative, again, I know that's an ambiguous term, I'll leave that for you, who to grapple with, a future planning group. So it wasn't just reacting to things, but actually seeing what was on the horizon. And this group would then make scenario planning about what may or may not be the most feasible course of action, should things change? And they will change. Particularly, the area may change, for example, as I said before, that's going to have an effect, maybe squeezing effect on the, what is currently the managed approach area. Maybe an independent chair. I'm not sure if you find an independent chair on this, on this issue. I don't think there is anyone. But if you could, then that might help to, again, bring the groups together, particularly on this future group, so that, you know, everybody feels that they're kind of got the same input. And having an annual performance review, not to the degree that we've reviewed it, but having something each year to monitor the performance of the managed approach that isn't just based on police calls for data, but also on people's experiences of it. One thing we did pick up, and this is a wider issue, it isn't just about the managed approach, although it's, you know, it's part of this, is about women in general that we spoke to, women residents that were, felt, didn't feel very safe, particularly those with children, felt intimidated, particularly by men usually, who thought it quite funny that they're in Holbeck to actually, you know, proposition anybody, any woman that they see out of the car window, for example. We picked that up time and time again, a need perhaps for something about respecting Holbeck and respecting all women in Holbeck, not, you know, not just relating to the managed approach. And we also suggested that, I'm not sure if this is going to work, having last weekend or the weekend before, but a more coordinated and partnership approach to the media around, and the media stories around the managed approach and around Holbeck in particular. Some of the kids that we spoke to at one of the Listening Well meetings were very sympathetic and empathetic to the on-street work, as are the wonderful people of Holbeck. Many of, nobody said that anything, you know, any support should be pulled and taken away from the women. But the young children said that they thought it was quite embarrassing each time if somebody Googled Holbeck, the first 10 hits that come up relate to the managed approach and they're elected on-street sex work, and they would really like it if Holbeck, the good things of Holbeck would dilute this kind of, this kind of image, if you like. I mean, and that's quite naive that, you know, I don't know what we'd have to do to knock them out the top 10 and put what you want on the top 10. It would take a lot of time and a lot of downloaded, I would imagine. But, you know, this need for a positive side of Holbeck and the Holbeck community, you know, to kind of, to dilute the kind of, the salacious kind of misreporting of a red light zone that is happening as we speak now in the press. And it's clearly kind of, you know, not true on many levels. Okay, right, is that okay? Right. It's up to, over to you, councillor Cooper.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that, Jason. And of course, please pass on our thanks to the rest of your team for conducting the review as well. So as Jason's outlined, the outcome, the main outcomes, I know he didn't have time to go into much detail, but we're happy to do that with any member of the executive board that would want to do so. But yeah, just to say that we will be going through each of Jason's and his team's recommendations, line by line, to assess what needs to be done on each of those recommendations and reporting that back through Safer Leeds and of course, to executive board as well. So I'll leave it there for now, Chair, until we got to questions.
Okay, thank you councillor Cooper. Can I open it up for questions, please? councillor Carter first, have you got anything you'd like to say or to ask?
Yes, as you would expect, Chair. I'll start by echoing your congratulations to Leeds United. One of those football fans who wants to see as many West Yorkshire teams in the Premier League as possible. And it's somewhat ironic that it was Huddersfield Town meeting West Bromwich Albion that ensured Leeds would indeed be promoted. And you're right, the benefits to the economy of the city at this most difficult time is going to be a massive boost in the next season. Because as we all know, a lot of travelling fans follow premiership sides. A lot of fans actually don't necessarily go home the same day, stay in local accommodation, support local businesses, and that's got to be good for the city. So it's interesting, isn't it, that it's Huddersfield University that you have sought to try and bail you out of this particular spot that you're in? And Jason said that financially, we got a good deal, and I'm not going to question that for a minute. However, what I would say is, the overriding question to my mind is how the residents of Holbeck got a good deal? I shall not be voting, I'll ask a number of questions as I go along. But I won't be voting in favour of this because we are still awaiting the community response exercise carried out by Listening Well, part of the Voice for Holbeck, which apparently have engaged with 500-plus residents, not 30, and also with local businesses. And one thing that has astonished me about this report is the very small number of people who participated. And I don't doubt for one minute the hard work that's been done. Neither do I doubt that it's a very complicated and difficult series of issues that need to be addressed. But it does surprise me, and I would like to see exactly what the Listening Well report will bring forward. And one point to quite the first question I want to ask is, is it correct that when this exercise is being undertaken by the council, residents were told that if the managed area was to end, extra policing and litter patrols would end as well? And I would like a direct answer to that, please. Because obviously and quite clearly, if that was the case, then it may well have an undue influence on the way people respond. So that's the first question. Secondly, there is a successful model, I believe, in Ipswich. And yet, despite the various engagements that have been with all sorts of organisations outside of the city of Leeds, we appear not to have had any discussion with the people responsible for the Ipswich scheme. And that seems to be, well, maybe they refused, I don't know. Jason or Paul will surely be able to answer that. But it seems to me to be something that's, that's missing. Another point I want to make relates to, what I can only refer to as, what I can also only refer to as a spin. I don't think that the residents of Holbeck will thank us for a spin exercise about Holbeck. Now, Holbeck, in my view, is an area that is improving in many areas, no end. And we want to see it do so. And councillor Cooper, you will recall that when we discussed the, some of the much improved housing stock in the area, I, I made it very clear that I was supportive of much further in financial investment there to complete the job. And hopefully, as we're going to be recipients, I think, of more government assistance in housing regeneration, that job will be undertaken. But I really, and I understand why, we want to be promoting the positive aspects of Holbeck. But if it's done as a spin exercise to try and paper over the massive differences of opinion, then I think we're, we're, the people of Holbeck would have a right to think we were taking them for fools. And they are far from being fools. They know precisely what's going on in their own area. And I think they have a right to something better than that sort of PR and media strategy. And that's precisely what it's referred to as. And actually, it's not particularly typical of what you would normally say. And I think it's a mistake that it's, it's gone in. In fairness to Jason, he seemed to accept that the, that was a very, a very provocative message for people who are feeling intimidated, like the young women with children who he correctly identified as being concerned. I remain, I have to say, extremely disquieted by the work so far. I don't think it is complete until we hear from a much larger section of the Holbeck residents. And at the end of the day, it's their voices that we need to be listening to. As well as, of course, putting everything in place that we can to support and help the women concerned. And, and they're clearly obvious different facetted problems. And I'd be the first to say that we, we, we need to do that. But not, but not at the expense of listening properly to the people who have lived in Holbeck for many generations. And this piece of work has a long way to go yet.
Okay. Good point. Would you like to come back in?
Yeah, thank you for that, Judith. First of all, I'd like to give you a direct answer to the direct question that you asked councillor Carter. And the residents of Holbeck have not been told, not in my presence or to my knowledge, that that resource wouldn't be there if there wasn't a managed approach. I've got to say that the area wouldn't be cleaned and wouldn't be policed. That has not been told to the residents. If I can just say, I've attended a number of those Listening Well events and have attended a lot of meetings prior to Covid, of course, with local residents in Holbeck about this issue, as well as many other issues that people in Holbeck are dealing with as well. And, and they show great community spirit, I've got to say, wonderful, coming together. Even though they have differences of opinion sometimes, and they do have differences of opinion. And we have to recognise that and acknowledge that. And I think that the part of the report that Jason talks about communications strategy is to recognise all of that depth of community and their opinions and their feelings about how they feel about their local area and not just about the managed approach, actually, to look a bit wider than that. I too am also looking forward to the results from the Listening Well events. Because as I've said, I've attended a lot of them. So I'd like to see, you know, what the, what is the outcome of the analysis of those events that I've attended. And I know James Rogers has attended and Paul Money's attended. Also, as Professor Roach said, he and his team attended a number of those as part of the research that they've undertaken as well. And I have actually met people from Ipswich about the, the the project that you talk about happened in Ipswich. But I'll leave Jason to answer that one because he did a lot more research into that. So I'm sure he can respond to that and Paul as well. And I think I've covered all the points that I wanted to cover in councillor Carter. If I can pass over to Paul and Jason, please.
That's councillor Cooper. Obviously, from my leasing experience, I'm very familiar with the approaches to this, this issue nationally. And was familiar with the issues that took place down in Ipswich some years ago. Perhaps I do know that Jason and his researchers looked at this in some detail. And bearing in mind their independence, perhaps if I offer Jason an opportunity just to comment on the Ipswich model, if indeed such a thing exists. And then any questions that issue from that, we could, we could come back to if that's okay. Over to you, Jason.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Yeah, the Ipswich model is a bit of a myth, really. That's what we found, even talking to cops in Ipswich, you know, last year. And the, if you read the review of, or the evaluation of the Ipswich approach, which was published several years ago, you'll see that it's, you know, it's not all about, it wasn't all about arresting curb crawlers. There are also support packages going in there to support the women. There was various, plus it was on the back of a serial murderer had been terrorising the place in Ipswich. There were lots of different things coming together. Yet I constantly hear of one ex-cop in particular who goes on, it was just about arresting people. If you look at it, it wasn't at all, yeah? And it is, and I spoke to Suffolk Police who said that it's still there. There is still on-street sex working. It hasn't gone, yeah? It might have gone away for a little while and been displaced, but it's come back again. So, you know, it's, you know, I've spoken to this with, about this with loads, but there is no evidence, okay, that that actually works over here. And in fact, it was the model that was, that was used prior to 2014, arresting everybody. You know, and all people will get now for soliciting is a fine. You know, in, in, in sort of Nordic countries, particularly in Sweden and Norway, selling sex is against the law. So you will go to, you know, you will get a sentence, you will get a much stiffer punishment. It's a totally different, operating totally different legal system. And I, and I urge people, and I mean, if you want me, I could send you a link to the review of the Ipswich model, if you like. And you will, you will see that it isn't, you know, the myth around it, it just doesn't, it doesn't measure up. And if I can come back at you, I quite like, I'm not a politician, so I'm taking my little, you know, my little chance here. We sent out 1950 links to our survey, okay? Our online survey, 1950 households in Holbeck, okay? In the two major, just before Christmas. Each link was bespoke, so they could only use it once. We didn't want it to be skewed. 1950, we got back within a two week period, about 80 from 1950. We also had a drop in nights at Holbeck on the 6th of January, where we had hard copies of the survey for people that weren't online or didn't want to go in online. And we also had laptops and tablets that they could fill one in if they didn't have the means to do so. Yeah, that was fine. I roped in my own son to help because I thought we were going to get inundated with people. We got eight people turn up, okay? We then, and this is what the point I'm making, we then asked for the help of various groups in Holbeck, Voice of Holbeck, Save Our Eyes. If we could put some details about the survey and an email address for people, their 500 members, whatever, their 600 members, to contact us so that we could then give them a code in which to complete the survey, you know? And the danger was then that we got overrun, we could have thousands of people, yeah? But we didn't. We only got another 30 odd. So these great big bases of, of, you know, that, of residents out there that, you know, that purported to be support or non-supporting the MA or don't like any of it. We tried our damnedest to try and tap into these people and they, and we just didn't get any, any, you know, the response was poor. And, and, you know, so I was at the wishing with the Listening Well meetings, many of them. So I too welcome what they've found because the data that I collected is already fed into the report.
Okay, Andrew.
Can I just come back very quickly? Can I ask you, can I come back very quickly?
All right, I was just asking you to come back.
Yeah, thank you. Jason, I, I was not suggesting that any one part of the Ipswich plan was better than the others. And you yourself admitted that prosecuting offending men was only part of it. And it went along with a whole series of support packages for the women involved and indeed for local residents. So crystal clear, nobody, nobody has answered yet why we had such a poor response from local businesses. And I would like that answering, please.
Do you mean in terms of the review?
Yep.
Well, if you read, if you read the bit about businesses, you will see again, we, we tried to move heaven and earth in order to get businesses involved, yeah? And you will see, well, actually I have to take it, I have to redact it. But you will see that there is in there, there is a chart that the reasons given for why businesses, yeah? Didn't want to get involved, many of them. I had two PhD students ringing up 72 bit local businesses in Holbeck to ask them about the managed approach, to take part in a survey or if they'd rather to take part in a small focus group. You will see that the vast majority of them that answered either said, well, it's not for me to answer. Please phone back next week when the boss is here, which we did. And there was no, they didn't want to take part. Or, you know, a fair percentage weren't interested and said it wasn't a problem. So why would they want to take part? There's also a lot of survey fatigue in, in, in Holbeck because they keep getting asked, you know, to complete surveys, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that brought in as well. And yet we couldn't even get a focus group of businesses together. And again, we opened ourselves up. We could have been inundated with people that wanted to talk to us. I mean, we were giving them the chance, but they didn't come forward. So, you know, again, in answer to your question, it wasn't through want of trying. You know, you've got to ask yourself why they don't want to get engaged. And it's not always, you know, that they think, you know, it's worthwhile because, you know, they may not see it as a problem.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for those very full responses. I'm conscious that I haven't asked councillor Goldson if you would like to come in.
Thanks, Chair. Well, one of the interesting parts of this paper, look, leader, is that councillor Carter talks about how he's not going to support the paper. But actually, we're not asked as members of the executive board to actually make a decision. And it seems like the majority of decisions which are happening around this managed zone are not something which is subject to the accountability of elected members on the council. It's more about professionals who are working within the services that are responding to the problem within the Safer Leads Executive Partnership. And I do think there is a problem there in terms of that political accountability. Because as I said here, we're only able to note the report, not to actually act on any recommendations ourselves. Saying that, it's a very thoughtful piece of work. But I think what would be of more value to local people is all the stuff that was mentioned, which has happened outside of this study. And that is that since 2018, after the concerns were raised, that the managed area wasn't getting the level of support and resource that was necessary to make it actually managed. That resource has been moved into the area. And I was actually more reassured from the verbal briefing that I got off Paul Money, which talked about the work happening outside of this study for practical amelioration of the problem than I did in this study itself. The problem with street working is even if we call the women involved sex workers, it's not something that anybody chooses to have a career in. And this is something which happens to people and we should be enabling them to exit it. And the problem with a managed zone is you don't want it to be something which is in place forever. Because hopefully, one of the measures of success is the reducing number of women that rely on this as an income to support their families. And the reducing number of women that are subject to addiction and the manipulation of organised crime that was mentioned earlier to force them into putting themselves in danger. So I don't think we're actually going to have any kind of conclusion to this ever. All that we can do is, as is pointed out in the report, be honest, recognise where the problem is taking place. Don't try and displace it, but actually properly manage it to ensure that those that are subject to the problems, including those that live in the area, as well as those people that are practising in the area, actually have access to solutions. And the more discussion that there is with the local community, the better. And I, and I think maybe the low correspondence that has happened in this study, if we're optimistic, hopefully, it's because most of those people that were asked to fill in yet another survey actually thought, well, I've got a direct line into changing things day by day anyway, with this new dedicated police team, with the direct line to officers, with the rapid response that we get from the public services to clearing up. And maybe that investment has actually paid off in terms of almost creating a normality for this managed zone to take off.
Okay, thank you. I don't think you were actually particularly asking any questions, but I think James Rogers would like to just come in.
Thank you, councillor Blake. I think there was, there was a question there at the beginning from councillor Goldson around the recommendations. And it was just to be clear to members that, yes, at this point in time, we are just reporting to executive board the outcome of the independent review that's been undertaken. We will now do further work looking at those recommendations. And we'll do it through the Safer Leads Executive Partnership because the recommendations will cover a number of different bodies and organisations in the city that will need to contribute to respond to those. But as recommendation C says within the report, we will make sure that executive board are kept informed and updated on any key decisions that are proposed so that members can actually take that democratic accountability for any changes that are ultimately implemented. And we will report back in due course.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper, do you want to bring the report to the conclusion?
Yes, can I thank everybody for their comments on this? And I think this report actually coming to executive board so soon after the findings of the report just shows how open and transparent we are being, actually, so that people can see what we're doing as a council in regards to the managed approach. So the community are fully aware of what we're doing as a, as a council and as a Safer Leads partnership together in this. We will, we look forward to the Listening Well coming back and feeding into what they've found out. And along with all the other evidence that we have gained from the local community in various ways, we'll work together on those recommendations and bring it back to executive board for your information. And of course, your influence. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I, before we just finally finish the report, just say an enormous thank you to, to Jason for, not only for the, the work they've done, but for coming on the call today and for giving us such a full, a full update on, on an incredibly complex area. And I, I'm just very struck from having talked to many people in the Ipswich area, for example, around the, the risk of measures that actually superficially can look as though they're addressing particular problems. But actually, from the point of view of the women, are actually making them more vulnerable by displacement. And I think that's something that all of us are very mindful of in this, in this very complex area of work. So we've been asked to note the comments of the report. And as councillor Cooper says, we And as councillor Cooper says, we recognise that this will be coming back to us should any changes in the work we're doing be put forward. So with that, with the exception of councillor Carter, I'm assuming, can we agree the recommendations of the report?
Chair, I'm reserving my position until the residents' report comes in. And I'm waiting to see what the residents say to the answer I had from councillor Cooper about what's been said to residents and what hasn't.
Thank you. Have you got that loud and clear? Yes, okay, thank you. So moving on, on the agenda, could we move on to item seven, which is the update report on the COVID-19 pandemic? I just want to say, you know, we deliberately chose to bring a separate report to full council last week to give as many members within the time constraints, an opportunity to actually comment on the, on the work that's been happening across the city in the last three to four months. Absolutely extraordinary response from so many people. And through the recommendations of the report, we all, we agreed that we would write as a council to all of our different partners to express again our gratitude and our appreciation of the, the work that has collectively taken part as, as our response. Now, obviously, we know that we are still very much in the midst of the pandemic. And whilst we have much more information about where the infection actually is, there remain concerns that we are learning to live with the virus. But until we move forward to a position where we have a vaccination, we, you know, we, we will have to still be extremely vigilant and make sure that in all we do, we get across and keep communicating the need for people to recognise they need to keep safe and to adhere and abide by the measures that are put in place in whichever circumstances they, they find themselves. So just, obviously, the report contains the usual information about the impact of all of the measures we've put in, all of the statistics in terms of the support we've given to business, the response of our departments in terms of, for example, of the waste recycling centres reopening and the ongoing support to our communities that so many of our ward members have been involved in. I think the significant update for executive board today is around the, the fact that we, through our Leeds Outbreak Control Board, which has met twice now, and we have produced our outbreak control plan. And have, we've had a really positive response across a range of different sectors, coming together and really informing the whole city of the different circumstances that they found and the opportunity to share best practice and help us to get on the, the front foot in terms of preparation for the further unlocking of the restrictions as we go through the summer and into, into the, the autumn. So just focusing through the work, obviously, looking at the next stages of recovery. And obviously, a real concerted effort at city level, but also at West Yorkshire and feeding into the national picture, the whole area around recovery. And that covers a range of different areas. So obviously, there's a lot of focus on business and the economy. There's also major focus on health and social care and social care relating to all age groups. There is and remains concern that there has been a fall off of the public presenting to the health service and the knock-on consequences that that's going to have in terms of their own individual health, but also of the ability of the health service to catch up with the backlog that has been generated. And there's been a real focus, obviously, across communities, but with particular reference to education in all settings, not just schools, which seems to get the, the vast majority of the limelight. But all education settings are obviously absolutely critical in terms of the wellbeing of children and young people, but also in terms of how parents could fully respond to the conditions of changes in the, in the workplace. And running through all of this, a real concerted effort, recognising that communication is absolutely vital. And I think, you know, we've seen on public transport that talking to transport operators, there's still, there is a real reluctance still from the travelling public to actually start to use public transport again, even within the safety measures that have been brought in by operators, both across rail and, and bus operators, which is obviously going to present enormous difficulties for, for continuing the services. So some very real and live issues that we all have to come together and continue to work on to make sure that we keep up the, I think, the, the really excellent response that we've had from council officers, but reaching out right across all of our partners across the city. We're going to have to keep this level and pace of work continuing as we move forward. I, I would quite like to hand over to Tom. Obviously, Tom has been really in the thick of it down at, working in Whitehall over the last, is it probably two months almost? I know he's coming to the end of his stint with Whitehall and coming back to us full time at the end of this week, which we obviously welcome very much in Leeds. But I do want to pay tribute to Tom on all of our behalf because I think he's done an extraordinary job in actually explaining and supporting the work that is done at a local level, which I have to be honest, is not always recognised at a national level. Not so an easy place to be, but I think we've, across the family of local government, we've had a really strong voice at the centre of the discussions. And we're very grateful for Tom being in a position to be able to do that, which is reflected obviously on the, the whole of the executive team who have stepped up to make sure that all of his work in Leeds has continued seamlessly. So with that, could I hand over to Tom? And just perhaps you could give us a bit of an update on where we are with all of the vexed issues around information sharing, data, et cetera, et cetera.
Thanks, thanks leader. Yeah, and thank you to everybody for the support that I've had in doing the job, which is in its final and 11th week. So we're nearly, I'm nearly, nearly there. And just for, for people who may not know as well, the government have funded my, my work on this. It hasn't been council taxpayers paying for it in Leeds, which has been, which has been good as well. The, the, I was just going to add three points to what councillor Blake had said. First of all, the, the, the new plans are really important in putting in preventative work and making sure that Victoria and her colleagues in DPH roles throughout the region and nationally are integrating all that work around high-risk settings, the, the work that's needed to deploy testing and tracing capability and, and bringing through the data to make sure that we know what's happening in our patch and what the trends are and how we can do our best job in dealing with individual cases. There have been major improvements on all those fronts, including funding that's been given to these plans, given to us for these plans. And Victoria and her team are doing a fantastic job to keep levels of infection as down as, as low as we possibly can within the city, particularly at a time when our neighbours have higher relative levels of infection compared to other parts of the country. So Bradford and Kirkcreeves in particular, but Wakefield and Calderdale actually as well, with some rising cases, are doing a really good job themselves to keep infection levels down. But they are higher than, than ours. And obviously, with our borders and our, the movement of people, as we know, happens across administrative areas. We, we need to remain as vigilant as possible and deal with outbreaks as quickly as possible. And the, the region is doing a good job in making sure that DPHs and others are working together to, to, being enabled to work together to do that. And that will continue to be a, a challenge. The, the data position is much improved from when I started the role. It is, it is now the case that there'll be daily updates of postcode level data on positive cases and testing generally for each DPH coming through, broken down by postcode, ethnicity, gender, et cetera. And we hope to get to a position shortly where the actual data itself, with the personal identifiable data, the NHS reference, is, is the same when a, when a DPH is dealing with it as a, as a National Public Health England member of staff is dealing with it. And I think that's the last bit that I'm really keen to get us to. The other thing we're trying to do, because although the national system is working pretty well and is, is reaching, you know, seven or eight out of 10 of people who are getting tested and nearly eight or nine out of 10 people who are contacts and persuading them to, to isolate, self-isolate, it's not getting to 100%. And if we can get referrals to a local level after, say, 48 hours of trying with the national system, we can get those numbers up even higher. And we also need to make sure that people who are self-isolating have the financial ability to do so. So the leader has been helping lead a, a push from the LGA and others to, to make representations to the Treasury to help people who are in that situation, who might otherwise not self-isolate and go and work somewhere else, even if a business premise is closed. So those sort of issues are very live and ones that we're talking to the Treasury about. And as I say, we've made a lot of progress on the money, on the plans, on the data, on testing, deployment, on many other things to transform what has been a very national system into one that has a very strong local foundation to it and an increasingly influential local element to it. I was just going to finish by looking ahead and just saying, just reinforcing what, what the leader said about thinking about winter, because it's, it's going to be a very different situation if we have to do all the things we've been doing, but do them in the winter months when the weather's bad and when the nights draw in and when people find it even harder to, you know, to get out and about at times. And so the integration between care homes and the NHS is going to be absolutely vital. And the interface as people move from one to the other, from hospital particularly, is going to be something that, you know, councillor Chadwood and councillor Blake and others have, have been very strongly advocating for, a very safe means and a, and a high amount of testing taking place for that to happen. And we need to make sure that happens in the next phase. We also need to have, the final thing I would say is we need to make sure that we have a funding basis for the council ourselves, but also in social care, to be able to play those roles. And we, we, I'm, I'm very grateful for the cross-party support that we've had to make that economic case, that financial case to the Treasury. And I think we'll need to continue to do that. And we'll come on to the, the finance paper later.
Okay, thank you. Before I hand over for questions, can I just say an enormous thank you to Victoria and her team for, for how they've stepped up to the crisis as well, what a baptism of fire, just coming into post and having to pick, pick this up. I don't know if there's anything you want to add at this point, Victoria?
Thank you councillor Blake. I guess just to stress part of what Tom's just highlighted in the sense that we continue to be incredibly vigilant across the city in terms of our prevention work, our swift response to outbreaks, because we are very conscious of neighbouring authorities and cross-border issues. And I'd just like to, to thank everybody who's involved right across the council and the city, because it is really, as you've said councillor Blake, through the outbreak board and through all the arrangements we had, a true city response. So clearly, we as a team do what we can, but, but, but it feels incredibly strong because of the engagement across the city. So just to, to note that. The paper was written at the end of last week and, and the rates in the paper were, were live on the 14th of July. So the rate was 6.6 at the time in, in the paper. Just, just to, to share with executive board that there was a slight increase in, in rates up to the 17th of July, and then they've dropped off to, and up, up until today. So that's the case for both Leeds and West Yorkshire. So we did get up on Thursday to a rate of 7.6. Those have fallen again now. I'm still waiting for today's rate to come through. But I have had our daily briefing from Test and Trace, which shows that we've, our rag rating has turned green again as a council for the first time in a week. So there seemed to be a slight sort of peak, not just for us, but, but more, more prominently for West Yorkshire last week, which was proved particularly challenging, but that feels much more positive now. So the, and I think particularly with the Wakefield situation, there was some issues of Leeds residents being affected by two outbreaks in Wakefield. So the Leeds outbreak situation continues to be relatively low. We continue to focus on all of our preventative work and proactive work with communities, which is key to the plan. And as Tom said, as, as we move forward, as lockdown continues to ease, it's about being ready for the next series of challenges. September, we know, will be challenging with the return of schools and for us at universities, as well as the onset of winter for the health and care system. So we'll continue to adapt the plan as we move through those, those, those next challenges. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Andrew?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think, first of all, I've been extremely impressed over this past two or three weeks with the speed with which, through the COVID board, we've responded to outbreaks or potential outbreaks. And some people listening to this may think that there haven't been any outbreaks in, or suspected outbreaks in Leeds. And of course, we know that there have, but they've been responded to very quickly and it would appear very successfully. And that, I think, is a reason for some optimism. However, what we all know we can't face is another lockdown of the economy of the country in the way we've had. And that's why these additional local powers have now come down to us. And I think there's one very clear message. And that is, we want to avoid at all costs another total lockdown. However, where there is a suspected outbreak, we will act with the powers we've been given quickly and in a very determined fashion. Because if we want to achieve the objective and make sure there's no wide-scale lockdown, we have to deal with the small outbreaks in a very decisive manner. And I'm sure that's what we will do. And I'm sure that's what we will do. On the issue of, of, of funding, we're going to, we'll be coming to it again shortly. But I've been more than happy to add my sixpenneth, as they say, to all calls for as much financial assistance as we can, can get from government. And we have had many millions of pounds in all sorts of directions. And they are in a, the same situation as Leeds, only magnified heaven knows how many times. Nonetheless, if we are, as we are expecting now to deal with more and more on a local basis, then there are obviously financial implications and we have to make sure that, that we get the financial support that, that we need. Tom Neat made the point about the onset of winter and the need to make sure that the Health Service, when it comes to discharging elderly people back into homes, does make sure the right amount of testing is, is carried out. Because that's going to be where I think the impact in any event in winter is always felt. And that can be made doubly more the case with this. It's interesting looking at the statistics about admissions and the number of people being now offered care packages at home as opposed to going into a, an elderly person's home. Now, that's all a matter of us rebuilding confidence in the system. Indeed, it is across the piece, a question of building confidence. But that can only be done by maintaining absolute vigilance in, in all respects. And we need to make sure that message is repeated by all of us. We had a debate last week, it, not less than a week ago in the council on Covid. So I, I'll, I'll leave it at that. But I think I'm very thankful for the briefings that I am receiving. Just one point, I have to say, I look in the media about, particularly at Leicester, and, and some of the comments coming out of the Leicester local authority area. We have had a lot of the statistics they seem to have been unable to get their hands on. And it astonishes me that, that we have been excellently briefed in every respect. And yet there seems to be some areas that don't seem to press the right, be able to press the right button on the computer.
I'm not sure you're expecting a, a response to that, Andrew, but.
Well, you could take it as a statement then.
Okay. I'm sure there, there, there might be views around some of this stuff. But if I could pass on to councillor Goldson and just ask if you have anything you'd like to say or ask?
Yes, thanks Chair. Well, I appreciate that the council has been given new powers now by the government. But it's also been given some new problems. I'm not sure that it's good to have powers if you're not actually able to have the tools to solve things that come your way. So for instance, I know that our Nightingale Hospital in Harrogate is housed in a conference centre. And then the government tells us that they want conferences to start resuming from late summer. And where does that put us in terms of preparation for a second wave? Victoria Eaton knows I have concerns of my own as well around taxi firms and how we protect both drivers and passengers, as these are used more heavily while public transport is still restricted. We need to have clarification as to what an essential journey is on public transport, because people aren't going on it because they don't think they're allowed yet. And yet in the next breath, it's supposed to be open to anybody who wants to go to work. And then of course, there are instances when the bubble bursts. So at a time of civic celebration, as been referred to by the leader and, and leader of the Conservatives, sometimes self-restraint is lost. And the mass gatherings that happened at Ellen Road and in Millennium Square, the latter especially, driven by drink, shows the dangers that there are in maintaining the message that the disease is still out there and we are still vulnerable and we should all be working together to control that situation. Because you couldn't track and trace in Millennium Square the other night. And I'm not sure that our track and trace model in terms of the technology and the expectations of those that we're contacting is actually putting us in a good position to confidently lock down locally where we need to. And I just wondered if there was any comment on that from Victoria or Tom?
Tom, would you like to come back first?
I, I think, I, I think the, it, it's a, it's a balance, I think. I, I, when I've been doing the job nationally, there were different views actually from the sector about whether we should get powers or whether, you know, it should be left to government. And I, I think we have to recognise that it's always, you know, I, I, I think that the, one of the main points I've always tried to stress, as I know that you and, and others, the leader and others have, is that you can put your best system in place of, of tracking and tracing, testing and tracing that you'd like, but it's down to individuals to do the right thing and to, to, operate and act in line with the guidance. And that's what's going to keep us safe. And that, that hasn't changed and that absolutely needs to continue. And I, you know, I won't make any more comment than that about that, that issue and where we've been the last few days. The, the second point I think is that, that I think the powers we've got, you know, a, a pretty, if you look at how many other powers have been given away to other sectors recently and even to mayors, I, I think these are the first for, for a long while. So I'm, I, I feel quite pleased that we've managed to secure them. And I think they're appropriate as well. They're not over the top though. It, it basically makes it swifter and easier for us, for us to act in a way that we're used to acting. But even then, the, the powers are a deterrent in a lot of ways. You don't really want to have to forcibly close things down. You want to work with owners to do the right thing and get a deep clean done so that it's only temporary and, and get people self-isolating so that you can move things on. So, so you know, that's the, that's the basis of the powers that we've got. I think the, the national situation is, is a, you know, the wider powers, if, if it does get wider in terms of community spread and outbreak and everything, I think should sit in a national framework. And, and, and it, but even then, as in Leicester, you've got to have a very strong local and national working relationship. And, and that, you know, that's something that we've all got to work on as we move forward. I think there are examples of Kirkcreeves, Bradford, Blackburn and others have worked very proactively and well with the powers that they've got and, and the communities they've got. And so there's good practice out there as well. But yeah, I, I, it's one to keep watching and, and I'd come back to the point I made about the finances. The biggest risk to all of this is the council finances more generally. It's not individual powers or individual resources. It's about the general financial position of the council and the sector. And if that can be stabilised, then we have a real fighting chance of getting through the winter and getting, getting working really well with the NHS and others.
Okay, and Victoria, did you want to come back at all?
Yes, please, just on a few points, Leader. First of all, I, I think councillor Goldson raises a, a really key point around the managing the expectations of what we do locally as opposed to what happens nationally and regionally, which is, is, is just, is proving to be, you know, a real, a real area of focus for us to continue to do. So for example, and it was mentioned also by councillor Carter, in terms of swift response to outbreaks locally, we're seeing that we're expecting to do, we're expected to do much more of the heavy lifting around response to local outbreaks. So we need to ensure that as we set up our local capacity, we're ready to do that. So that's one, that's one key issue. I, I think as well, the issue about being proactive with some of our key groups is something we're really keen to do locally as well. So councillor Goldson has mentioned taxi drivers as one example. We're, we're really keen to regularly test taxi drivers. We would love to do that locally. At the moment, we're being asked to hang on before we do do that, because there are four places in the country, included Bradford, that is piloting the regular testing of asymptomatic key workers, including taxi drivers. So again, we would be keen to do that locally. We just have to negotiate that with, with the national pilots. But the point is well recognised and I, I fully support that.
Okay, thank you. I think we've, we've given that a, a very good airing and of course, this will be, continue to be a standing item on our agendas as we go forward and come back after August into the start of the, the autumn and the, the winter season. And I don't need to say any more about the resourcing because we're going to go straight into councillor Lewis's portfolio. But whenever I get the opportunity, I do stress the point. You know, there's, there's absolutely no point in having the, the powers if we haven't got the local resource to be able to deliver the work that we do. And I think it's one thing to get the recognition from, from Westminster and Whitehall, but really I think there needs to be a much greater understanding of the risks that are, are coming to, to us through the financial situation in locally of just how on earth they expect us to be able to respond when asked to do so as things move forward. But with that, if we could agree the recommendation of the paper and acknowledge the, the work across the city in response this far and move on now to councillor Lewis's portfolio. First of all, for the Financial Health Monitoring Report.
Thank you Leader. And like the last report, they flowed together fairly nicely. So quite a lot of the comments have been made on the last report that relates to this one, particularly around the real urgency to resolve the council's financial problems and stabilise finances. So we are both able to respond to the, the increasing focus, as councillor Carter said, on, on, on outbreak control being based locally, but also in the broader context of our ability to restore public services and then to play our part in helping the economy recover and help, help things out, be working like transport and whatnot will support that. What I would say in, in, again, in introducing, this is a couple of things. First of all, on the table at 3.4.2 on page 108 of the document pack, the estimated share figure in there, we now know that the actual share is, is 7.8 million, which means that the revised funding gap for this financial year is, now stands at £63.9 million. And again, this report sets out a number of the ways that we hope to, hope to move forward on that, both in terms of if we have to find that the processes will go through or the work we're doing on, on central government. I think Leader, as Tom mentioned in, in his comments on the last report, maybe as I've finished, Tom could update us on the position with the national government negotiations around this.
Thank you. Tom, would you like to?
Yeah, just Victoria Bradshaw has been in touch with the officials who run the National Local Government Finance Programme and is, we're, we're in regular touch, as other councils are, about our financial situation. I've also spoken to senior MHLG officials to make sure that they're aware of our, our specific challenges, which are, as we've said before, to do with the, the way Leeds as a council's finances and, and grant and income are structured and have been over a long period of time. And there is a recognition of that. We, we will be continuing those discussions throughout the, the summer so that we can be in a position to, to formally go to the government if we need to, to look at the gap that still remains in our finances for this financial year before the spending review. The Treasury understandably have been wanting to hold decisions about future years for the, the, the spending review that's planned for later in the year. But many councils like ours in the sector have been making the point about the, the welcome support that's been given to date not quite being enough for us to fill the gap that's needed for this financial year. And given our responsibilities to legally balance our budget and to work back from that to a point where we, if we feel that we're not able to do that, we take action, then hence that's why we need these discussions with government and why we will need to, I'm, I'm sure at some point in the year, unless something dramatic happens and changes, we'll need to be going back to them to have that conversation more directly and formally about how we can fill that gap between our, our budget and what is, what, what has been the impact of Covid on Leeds specifically over the last few, few months. So we'll obviously be keeping exec boards completely updated on that. And as I said before, the, the cross-party approach to these issues makes it much more compelling for government to listen to us, I think, when we, when we talk to them. And that has been very welcome so far and we hope that that will continue moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. I don't know, Victoria, if you want to come in now or if you want to wait and see what questions we've got?
I'll wait to see what questions we've got, if that's okay, councillor Blake.
Yes. And I'll stay in exactly the same measured tones that have been used so far. If and when it comes to taking very difficult decisions, I'm sure there, there will be a parting of the ways on some of them. But at the moment, that's not the case. And I think it's essential that those of us who can put some input into Whitehall and the Treasury do so to support the council's position. It is true to say that Leeds has some issues that other authorities don't have. As Tom has said, historically, some rightly, some wrongly. But nevertheless, it's, it's imperative to get the extra support. And I had a, a first-class briefing from Victoria last week. And all I would say is that we need to, at least for the time being, maintain the all-parties approach. What I don't want to find is that I am saying one thing and then it's undermined in another direction. And as long as I get the assurance that I'm going to be kept fully in the loop from the council's end, not just the government's end, that's great, because we need to work together to secure the future of the council's finances.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Goldson, do you want to come in?
Yes Chair, just to, just to add that everyone appreciates that the council is in an odious position in terms of having to commit to spending upfront and relying on the good faith of the government to compensate where appropriate. But that some services, just through the fact that the income that the council has relied on in the past and has developed over the years as, as an extra way of keeping council tax down, just isn't there anymore. And this isn't the time for any political shenanigans to happen and for anyone to try and get any kind of advantage over difficult decisions being made. And we will play our part as colleagues on the council when the administration looks at individual areas of spend and where we might need to draw our reins in this year in the hope that they can be expanded again in years afterwards.
Thank you. Councillor Lewis, do you want to draw the paper to conclusion?
Thank you Leader. And I welcome the comments from councillor Carter and Goldson and just give that assurance. It's a, it's an ever-changing picture in terms of the, the resources available and, and, and the position.
It's an ever-changing picture in terms of the resources available and the position we're in. But I can, no question, I can give the assurance that councillor Carter asks for that we'll keep all group leaders in touch with the position we're in. And we welcome the cross-party work at this stage. Like Tom said, I think it gives us a really strong position with the government to continue that. And we'll certainly play our part in making all that information available.
Thank you. Can I just also add that we've had expressions of real support from our partners across the city in this as well. And I think the more voices that we can actually get working with us on this, the better. I think there's an enormous recognition of the contribution that the council makes in so many different areas that we really can't afford to lose. So with those comments, can we agree?
Can I just make one comment, if you don't mind?
Yes, of course, Neil.
Yeah, so it's really just to emphasise to members, really, that I think these estimates are very much estimates and they're based on so many assumptions that you need to kind of bear that in mind. And I think figures will fluctuate from month to month. That's why it's important to keep such a close eye on it. I expect, actually, next month, there to be quite a significant variation, which will improve some of the situation. But then equally, we will see how things like the restarting of sports centres go and what sort of income we get. So there are great uncertainties in this year's budget in a way that we've never had before. And I think just members need to be aware of that rather than taking the figure as something which is gospel.
Okay, thank you. Your comments are noted. So with that, can we agree the recommendations and move on to councillor Lewis's second paper, please?
Thank you, Leader. This is the capital programme update. I think the important point I would highlight is, this is one of the areas where we have restricted further spending whilst we are reviewing our finances. It sets out in the paper the terms where we are allowing, whether it's health and safety, Covid-19-related spend, or those capital programmes where we receive external income and grants, or we are currently committed to delivering them. There's quite a useful table, table one, which sets out the breakdown of the sources of funding for the capital programme to show, actually, a great deal of it is funded in different ways. Finally, we've been asked to agree the schemes under the recommendations. And again, it sets out for all of them. Many of these are schemes that we've long sought, such as the flood alleviation, or schemes that are vital for our residents, like the schools funding or the disabled facilities ground. But again, it's very clear how these schemes are funded at this time, Leader.
Thank you, James. Councillor Carter?
Yes, thank you. I just would like to ask Victoria, this paper was produced before the good news that the government is to give us £21 million in order to complete the flood alleviation scheme. I was conscious that when we agreed as an executive board to go ahead with that scheme, it was before the government's announcement, and we therefore did so at our own risk, or should I say, the taxpayers' risk. And I'd like to know how that announcement that we're going to get the £21 million and indeed the additional £1.3 million for natural flood defence work impacts upon the capital programme. Just want a couple of other comments. I absolutely support the steps that have been outlined by councillor Lewis in virtually freezing the capital programme where it is not supported by external funding, excluding borrowing, unsupported borrowing. And what we do need to see to get the complete picture here is the progress on capital receipts and the disposal of surplus assets and how we intend to then use those receipts to help our financial situation in the short, medium term. And I'd like to think we can have that sort of information long before the crucial round of meetings in September. I'll leave it at that.
Victoria, do you want to come in?
Thank you, councillor Blake. The funding that we received regarding the flood alleviation scheme means that now that we're not going at risk with the scheme, so we'll be able to progress it without the risk that we wouldn't get that funding and therefore have to borrow to fund that. So it takes away that risk from the capital programme so that we can progress. I don't know if Martin wants to add anything further about the flood alleviation scheme on that point.
Yeah, I can do, Victoria. I mean, members will recall that because of the need to progress the flood alleviation scheme at pace, we split it into two parts. So there was the element that delivered one-in-a-hundred-year protection, which has a capital value of about £87 million. And that started on site in January. And then within that, we had a variation where the second element of that, which is the flood attenuation further upstream and enhanced natural flood management, could be varied into that contract if that funding came forward. So there was about £23.5 million of funding requested. And as councillor Carter rightly points out, the government announced that a funding of £21 million for the core scheme and a further £1.32 million for the natural flood management. So that provides a very large part of that funding that was outstanding, that will now allow us to move forward with confidence with the element that provides flood protection of one in 200 years for the entirety of the flood alleviation works that we brought forward. That includes both the current scheme that's on site and the scheme that we concluded in 2017, which is a stretch from the railway station going south. Thank you, Chair.
I think it's fair to say that there is still some work to do to make sure that we secure that funding in terms of the business plan. But very much as we said last week, it is welcome and it is the result of an impressive campaign from across the city, cross-party, with MPs as well as the council, to make sure that we get the protection that we know that the air corridor really does need. We all know that, and we saw it in last winter, although it didn't actually come to a crisis situation, the levels did get very, very high over the last winter. So we can expect repeats of the flooding that we've had in recent years. But we are conscious that there is more work to do to make sure we absolutely nail it down.
Yeah, the fine wording in the press statement, councillor Blake, was that the announcement is subject to death for a Treasury sign-off. So that's the process that we're going through. But as you say, it is a very big step forward in terms of where we were.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Galton?
No questions, Chair.
Okay. Any further comments, councillor Lewis, or are you happy to move on?
Thank you. Just on councillor Carter's comment about assets, it says, like many of the financial aspects, it's a much changing picture and be happy to make sure that a briefing is provided, Leader, and councillor Carter.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your support to both councillor Carter and councillor Galton for the, that we know the difficult work that we're going to have to do over the next few months. So with those comments, can we agree the recommendations and move on to councillor Malheron's portfolio and item 10 on district heating? And of course, there are some pink papers, and we will be going into a separate meeting to discuss those after this meeting.
Thank you. I'm pleased to be presenting to executive board the latest phase of district heating network rollout in Leeds. So it's low carbon energy from waste, using energy from the city's refuse, the energy from waste plants that's already been connected to around 950 council high-rise blocks, sorry, 950 flats in those high-rise blocks. And public buildings include seeing Leeds Playhouse and currently being connected up to the civic hall and some of the buildings of the city centre. So the third phase of this is proposed to link that district heating network up to the new developments in the South Bank, working with Vastint and their developments around the, what would be the new city centre park. The programme not only is supporting low carbon energy of the city, but also supporting the expansion of the superfast broadband rollout in the city as the telecommunications pipelines are also put down at the same time as the district's heating pipes. So the recommendations are to executive board to, when we get secured, funding from the base HNEP funding, which is a heat networks investment project, just have a look at. Inject that alongside some capital borrowing, social borrowing to deliver this phase, working in partnership with businesses down there as part of commercial agreements with them that's still been drawn up. And it'll be a council special purpose vehicle that will receive that funding and then the working partnership with Vital Energy and Arup to roll the scheme out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carter?
Yes, thank you. A number of issues on this, really. Can you clarify for me how much the council is going to borrow? That is unsupported. Thirdly, can I have an assurance that we will not sign any agreement until Vastint, which is, I think, part of IKEA, is actually contractually committed to building their new building? Because if...
Sorry, I don't know if I'm the only one who is not getting most of councillor Carter's comment.
In Leeds now came on board. It's my understanding that they originally sought to go on their own, the NHS, and on this particular occasion, it's not exactly worked out as they would have liked. Clearly, it's a big benefit to us if they were to join in our scheme. Thank you.
Sorry, I missed most of the questions there. It was very interesting.
Shall we see if Martin managed to pick them up? Martin, would you like to come in?
I suppose we have Neil here.
Oh, sorry.
As well, but yes, councillor Carter, you were cutting out at various points, but I think grasped the main point, which is to say that as part of the recommendations, it's saying delegate responsibility to only invest once a suitable commercial agreement has been reached. So we won't, we're going to be committing something like £3.8 million, but it's going to be on the basis that we know that Vastint are going forward. We can go into the details of the risk assessment more in the pinks, but I'm also happy to commit to liaising with opposition leaders in advance of signing off the agreement to show that we've got sufficient guarantees before we go forward. But clearly, what it is doing, and it is probably part of the paper, is opening up a huge opportunity for us in the South Bank of the city to develop all the new housing connected to... And also just my way of explaining why we're coming in July rather than coming at a later date is that we need to commit the council in terms of a formal decision in principle so that we can draw down the £2.5 million from HNEP, which clearly also adds to the commercial viability of the scheme.
Can we just clarify that Vastint is the property arm of IKEA and doesn't actually have a connection to the retail operation?
Well, my understanding, councillor Blake, and I can clarify this for members, but they're owned by the family, but it's a completely separate company that I think...
I think it's important to make that there. Polly, is there anything you'd like to come in with?
No, I think Neil's covered the main points, to be honest, though. No.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Galton?
No questions, Chair.
Okay, councillor Malheron, anything to add?
Sorry, struggling to unmute the mic there. Nothing to add at this point, thank you.
Thank you. With those comments then, and obviously further discussion of the pink papers, can we agree the recommendations before us? And with that, can we move on to your second item, please, councillor Malheron?
Thank you. So this second item is around improving public transport access and active travel that would connect communities across the city. So eight wards covered in these schemes. They'll create new or graded facilities for bus transport users, travel information, real-time travel information for people, enhancing connections between public transport hubs, schools, communities, and improving walking and cycling. They're fully funded through the DFT's Public Transport Programme. The plan is to begin construction of the schemes this summer with completion by summer 2021. There's a breakdown of seven schemes, eight awards, with a range of schemes covering, for instance, improvements to the bus, the connections from New Putsey Station to communities in Putsey, to walking and cycling links through Centre, through Lincoln Green, which also connected the... Two schemes that will include the linking of Loft House, Robin Hood through Rothwell up to Roffle Country Park and the communities, again, quite isolated in my order, through to Middleton. So there's a range of different schemes there, and I'll leave it at that for now. I'm sure there'll be questions from members.
Thank you. There's a bit of banging going on. I don't know if anyone needs to mute the phone. If I could ask councillor Carter first if you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. No, not many. I just want to make a point on the Putsey proposal, which actually does slightly impinge into Carling Farsley Ward. But the Putsey members have raised with me that they have not been briefed. But I have had an undertaking from officers involved with the scheme apologising for that and have undertaken to make sure they get a proper briefing before they suddenly find people on site and residents undoubtedly raising issues. My only general point is that if you split this up equally across the schemes, it's a million pounds a scheme. I realise it's from the LTP, but have we done any research into the financial breakdowns of the schemes post-Covid? These were all schemes, as far as I'm aware, that were drawn up prior to Covid, where that obviously affects public transport more than it would walking and cycling ways. So I suppose it's those that I'm focusing on. Have the financial costing been revisited in the light of what's happened with public transport?
Okay, would either Martin or Gary like to come in on that?
I think it's Martin and Nick for us today.
I've got Gary on my list.
Leader, I can come in if that helps. I don't know if you can hear me.
Okay, Gary?
Yeah, we'll pick up on the local councillor's point. Apologies for that. Not quite sure what's happened there, but I'm sure Nick and the... but I'm sure Nick and the team will just pick that up. In terms of implementation and the cost, as with all schemes, we'll revisit them as we get closer to implementation. Covid-19 has had some impact on some of our schemes, but touch wood, contractors are working very closely with us on how we can mitigate these impacts and keep costs down. So I think it will be part of an ongoing process. But we do have Nick on the line, whether he wants to just make any additional comments?
Yes, thank you, Gary. Just to respond on the Putsey members' comment. The issue that we discussed with councillor Syria last week was actually about them being kept up to date rather than engaging with them. Subsequently, we've apologised about that. We've provided councillor Syria and his ward colleagues with a full briefing and will continue to do so throughout the delivery process. In terms of the cost evaluation as a result of Covid, I've actually got a meeting, I say meeting, a call with colleagues at the Combined Authority tomorrow morning to discuss such a thing. And we'll continue to look at as the situation changes. Obviously, it's quite fluid at the moment and we found that with the City Connect project, we're actually being able to deliver it quicker and slightly cheaper. So hopefully the Covid situation will allow us to do the same through the transport hubs. But we'll continue to monitor the situation throughout the delivery process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. That was very helpful.
Thank you. Councillor Dalton?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Somewhat similar to councillor Carter's comments about Putsey. We as local councillors were concerned that the cycle way that was proposed for our ward appeared out of nowhere because it had never actually been identified by the community or by councillors as a priority. And then all of a sudden it appears in a transport plan that's been brought up supposedly for our benefit. I can assure councillor Carter as well that the average of schemes might be a million each, but the scheme that's going through our ward is only £170,000, so it's not exactly equitable distribution. To be positive, it's good that transport hubs associated with district town centres are being recognised and that different creative solutions are being sought for them. So for instance, a scheme that is going in in Putsey in terms of connecting up a train station which is separated from the town centre by a very major road actually corresponds very similarly with the situation in Rothwell Ward, where Rothwell Town Centre is separated from Wuddlesford Train Station and there's a great big dual carriageway going through the middle. So if lessons can be learned and the investment seen here as a first step so that other communities can benefit from the schemes which are going forward and then hopefully replicate them, that would be great. But yes, there is a little bit of a disconnect between how schemes are identified in the first place before they are presented to the public which they're meant to be serving. Because if we had chosen to have a £200,000 cycling investment scheme, it wouldn't be where it is now because there already are cycle paths and all this does is basically stick a load of tarmac on top to make them a bit wider. So yes, involve communities a little bit more and you'll get even more out of these schemes.
Okay, councillor Milhern, do you want to come back on that?
Yes, I'm very happy to come back on that. So the cycle schemes were set out in the Cycling Starts Here programme, so they've been in that for some time. Certainly, Arden and Robin Hood Ward members are very pleased to be seeing Rothwell Greenway, which is an off-road route that's basically a bit of a dirt track, frankly, most of the way, massively enhanced with the three metre wide all-weather surface and improved crossings, which are currently not there for the side rails that join it. And also lighting through, so we've got an underpass under the A61 and there are underpasses through the motorway at the points through from East Asli and Thorpe through to Middleton, all of which will encourage cycling to be continued for children and families getting to school that basically would not want to be using those facilities otherwise. So certainly it may not have been as well received by Rothwell Ward members as it was by the public that were consulted in both my ward and in Rothwell pre-Covid and public events that we held, but it was also supported by all of the Arden and Robin Hood Ward members. So I don't know what's happened with the Putsey scheme, but officers obviously answered that. The rest of the schemes, there was only a few issues with the Middleton Park scheme that's been revised alongside Ward members' feedback and the other schemes have been supported by members across all of the wards.
Thank you. Yes, we decided to go for a more spread out benefit rather than a concentrated one in my ward. So thank you for that. Okay, with that, can we agree the recommendations of the report? And move forward then on to the final portfolio. Councillor Prior for item 12.
Thank you, Chair. So my first paper is the Ombudsman Report. So this is the second time this Ombudsman Report has come to executive board, so our members will be familiar with it. It last came in September. It then went to the Children and Families Scrutiny Board for a more, for a further look at it. And this is an update on the progress made on the recommendations for improvement. The key document then is Appendix Three, which details all the action taken, both in terms of the individual case as well as wider changes for the directorate, but I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you. Can I bring in councillor Carter?
Yes, just one comment. Obviously, it was a sad and sorry tale, particularly for the people involved. I just want one reassurance and that is that we will request that scrutiny ask for progress reports on the action plan as appropriate.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, councillor Dalton?
No questions, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the update, councillor Prior. Unless there's something you want to come back with? And move on to your final report, the final report of the day.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the annual standards report, which we've reformatted a bit for this year so we can offer a clear evaluation of data and direction of travel. We can also demonstrate how a lot of the work we're taking to improve things further in line with the 3A strategy. Although, of course, 3A strategy was only implemented from July 19. I wasn't planning on going through everything line by line in this report, you'll be pleased to hear. So I just wanted to pick out a few key points. So going straight into the report, the attainment data, which I'm afraid my version, or it doesn't have page numbers, but it's very early on in the report itself, shows that Leeds to be trending equal or upwards in 22 of the 26 measures listed. I do think this is a clear demonstration of how Leeds is improving attainment wise over time. I think it is clear to say as well that the data nationally is improving too, but further tables just after then actually demonstrate quite clearly that Leeds is improving at a faster rate than the rest of the country. So if we look at the key stage one data, for example, tables five through 10, sure that since 2016, we have improved much faster than national. So for example, the percentage reaching the expected standards in reading teaching assessment has improved by five points compared to national improving by one. The percentage reaching the expected standard writing teacher assessment in Leeds by nine points compared to an improvement of four nationally. And key stage two has a pattern that's very similar of improving faster than national. And so this isn't to say, of course, that there's not further to go. Of course, it's not, but we have a clear and positive trajectory of making sustained improvements. And the report goes into detail about the number of programmes and initiatives being undertaken to ensure that not only does this progress continue, but that we focus on specific areas such as writing, which I think is a good example of somewhere which does continue to need additional support. In terms of Progress Eight Scores, which is a measure which looks at the progress a pupil has made in their secondary education. It compares what the pupil achieved in the eight subjects included in their attainment eight score and compares this to what the pupil would have been expected to achieve given their key stage two results. So in 2019, Leeds' Progress Eight Score was 0.03 compared to a national Progress Eight Score of negative 0.03, which does mean that Leeds children, in terms of improvement, have outperformed their national counterparts. Now, there is still a gap for disadvantaged students and this is something we're looking to focus on, but it is worth looking that on the Progress Eight Scores, again, Leeds' disadvantaged pupils do score higher than the national Progress Eight Score for disadvantaged pupils. In terms of, I thought it would be useful as well to talk briefly about how this report will go forward in coming years. Obviously, exams this year have been cancelled. So I just wanted to speak very briefly on how great it can be issued for pupils finishing this year. So for GCSEs, ASNA levels along with vocational and technical qualifications, the schools will be asked to send the exam board two pieces of information for each of their student's subjects based on what they know of the pupil's work and achievements. They will send the assessments into the grade they believe the pupil is most likely to get if the learning, teaching and exams have all taken place as usual. And for each subject, a list of students in the school taking that subject listed by grade and performance in order. So schools aren't required to use or set any additional work now for this grade. It will only take into account progress made before schools closed, so potentially not to disadvantaged students who have had a more difficult lockdown experience. And this should mean that results can be standardised and that people shouldn't suffer if any individual school is more generous or harsh when making those judgements. This hopefully will mean that the final grades, well, this may mean that the final grades are, may differ slightly to ones the schools send in, although young people shouldn't be seeing the ones that the schools have submitted, those should remain confidential. And then those grades received this summer will look the same as previous years, will have the equal status for universities, colleges, employers. But I think it's worth taking that into account for when we come to next year's annual standards report because we don't really know yet how that's going to land. And just before I finish, I do think it's also worth highlighting and actually welcoming the recent guidance from government on off rolling. I'm really pleased that there's been acknowledgement from governments that in a post-Covid world in particular, then there's that recognition that we have to have a focus on mental health and we have to have that focus on inclusion. So I understand this guidance will be coming to all schools and expressly asking partners to continue to reinforce the message of quite how inappropriate and actually damaging to young people off rolling can be. I'll leave it there now, but obviously there's a huge amount of data, so I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Can we move on to councillor Carter?
Yes, Chair. Just one, that was a very thorough resume, want for a better word. And like councillor Prior, I welcome the new guidance from government on very important issues that will affect young people more dramatically than perhaps we might know post-Covid. I want to ask a question on the uptake of children in, is it from two onwards provision, which I understand nationally is extremely high, but in Leeds is not so high, down at 66, 67%. Are there particular reasons for that? And if there are, what are we doing to try and get over those obstacles? Because it does seem to be, it's quite a massive disparity.
So councillor Prior, this really falls under councillor Venas?
Yes, yeah.
Councillor Venas, are you able to pick this up?
A written response would do. It's quite complicated, Chair, but the discrepancy between nationally, which is in the 90%, and Leeds at the 67% is huge. And so I would prefer really a written response so I can get the thing in proper context.
I can respond, I can make some initial comments and then Sal might want to come in. And also, of course, we can provide a more detailed written response. This was picked up when we had the early year peer review last summer. We looked at our early years outcomes and those of the core cities and we had some contact with Newcastle because they have, I think they have almost 100% uptake of two-year-old places. And as you've said, councillor Carter, we have in the 60s. So we have actually started using methods that they use to attract parents, particularly first to two-year-old places. We had quite a dry letter that would go out previously, whereas they have much more interesting ways of getting new parents in. They have like a golden ticket scheme where they send it out, making it look like a much more attractive offer. And then we've got the 3A strategy as well, which feeds into that. But I don't know if Sal wants to add anything, but then we would be happy to get a more detailed response of what we're doing to increase two-year-old places, though of course some of this has been disrupted by the pandemic.
Yes, just to add that I'm happy to provide a detailed written response. We have been working on targeting those eligible but not taking up the two-year off, both in ways that councillor Venas described, but also some quite pragmatic and practical examples of how families who aren't taking up their free entitlement. So I'm happy to write to you on that basis, but just to assure you that it is a detailed part of the plans that we've got around this.
Can I just say that it's important on this sort of issue that we compare ourselves with our peers and that we, you know, that we're comparing like with like, but can I give you some personal feedback? The golden ticket idea has gone down incredibly well and providers are very impressed and they've had families coming in, holding the golden ticket and it really has, I think, made a real difference actually. And it is that really, that real positive and personal engagement with families that I think is exactly the approach that we need to make sure that we really do reach the really most vulnerable families as well. And I think there are issues, aren't there, in terms of it, you know, it's been quite a step for two-year-olds from some communities to go into more formal settings, which I think is all part of the mix. And this isn't a new phenomenon by any means. It's one that's been going back for quite some time. So thank you for the different approaches for a very difficult area.
Yes, in the peer review, we did compare ourselves to other core cities and that approach was taken from Newcastle. And I wasn't sure it would work actually. It just sounded like a bit gimmicky. But actually, it has had a really fantastic uptake. I think what we sent out before was a dry, boring didn't make it sound that great, taking up your two-year-old offer. And actually to present it as something you're incredibly lucky to have, that's this amazing golden opportunity, has actually really worked. And Newcastle do have almost 100% attendance using that approach, 100% take-up at two years old. So hopefully we'll get our figures up there as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And councillor Dalton?
Thanks, Chair. Well, I wish you every luck as well in terms of getting your numbers up as well. I have to say, I heard about the golden ticket and I just cringed a little bit because I thought it was just, well, another PR response to something which is pretty serious and ingrained. But if it works, it works and I look forward to seeing the statistics that show that that intervention has got more kids into early years provision. The issue around comparison with others. It is noted that in early years, we are still in the very bottom in terms of performance of local authorities. And in the area where we have improved, which is to do with the gap between those most unfortunate and the best performing children, it seems that our improvement is predicated on the national average going down. So we've had a little bit of a windfall there. I would like to see it more entrenched, but I would have more confidence that it. I would like to see it more entrenched, uh but I would have more confidence that it was to be so if I felt that there was far more behind the three A strategy than just the strategy. Um I would like to see more resources for early years than we've had previously. I know that our own children's centres have made a big point about keeping them open. Uh and we're one of the few local authorities that hasn't closed children's centres. But our income projections for those operations have never actually fulfilled what we expected of them. And some real investment needs to go in to make them as attractive as the golden ticket is offering, so that their affordability is attractive to people and they take up all those places. Also, of course, in the background, due to Covid, uh a lot of our childcare um facilities in the city, whether they be public or private, are under extreme pressure. And they're one of the few parts of the economy which hasn't seen a comprehensive response from government. And I just wanted to know what the council is hoping to do to support those organisations, to, to maintain the services that they offer for parents, for children at the very earliest stage of development, which is of course the most important for their lifetime chances. And one of the reasons why we keep going on about it every year when the annual standards comes through, when we find ourselves at the bottom end of the scale. Um so I, I really do want to get behind a, a well-resourced, really ambitious scheme. Um but so far, as we've pointed out, it's been PR through the golden ticket and fingers crossed.
Um councillor Venas, do you want to come back?
Yeah, I'd like to come back on the issue around funding for early years, if that's okay leader. And there are also comments about income generation locally. So early years funding has been a massive issue that's been highlighted during this crisis. Um I mean, first of all, the government did a U-turn several weeks into the crisis where they changed the rules about what early years providers were entitled to after everyone had done all their financial staffing planning. It was already a really precarious factor financially and nationally. There is an expectation that a lot of providers won't reopen and will have a significant sufficiency issue. The sector has described themselves as the forgotten sector. Um guidance for opening early years settings to more children from the first of June came out eight days after the guidance for schools and they've missed out on all the funding, the catch-up funding that's been offered to schools at post-sixteen education. So in terms of what we're doing locally to support early years, um I'm having regular Zoom calls with senior officers from the directorate with early years providers. And then in addition to that, there are weekly meetings taking place, one for childminders, one for group settings and one for wraparound care. And the providers have fed back incredibly positively about that. They've been really keen to have those meetings. And they've been really clear that they don't feel neglected locally and they feel very supported. And we don't actually anticipate a sufficiency issue locally. We have been able to provide the support that, that those providers need. There's a huge amount of lobbying going on nationally about early years funding. The sector itself is doing a lot. Um councillor Blake is, um you know, in, in her, in her role as the chair of the LGA's Board for Children and Families, Tulip Siddique is the minister and the children's commissioner, as well as a number of big children's charities like Bernardos and the Children's Society. Um in terms of income generation of our own children's centres, our early, a little owl settings. Um it's really interesting, we don't actually, we don't actually provide those settings with making a profit as the, as the purpose of doing that. Um we provide, we pay our staff a living wage, there's a good career structure. And the focus is very much about, about providing high-quality childcare, primarily in the most deprived areas. Our early year, our little owl settings came out of the Sure Start programme, so by definition, they're in the most deprived areas of the city. So you, you don't have in many of them lots of fee-paying parents and that's absolutely right. That's absolutely what we would want to do and where we would want to provide excellent early years provision. This is a really big issue coming out of, of the pandemic or coming out of the first stage of it because we really need a thriving early years sector. We need it for children's development and for their readiness for learning. But we also need it as a key plank of, of the economy and it will particularly affect women trying to continue working if we don't have really good early years provision and we don't have adequately funded early years. Thank you.
Okay, Sal, is there anything you want to add?
Just to say that, um you know, I appreciate councillor Galton's point around um where we are ranked particularly in relation to the um GLD scores, and I presume you're referring to, and that has slightly improved this year. Um but it also predates, these results predate our three A strategy and our early years plan that we've got in place at the moment. Um if you look at the ELG scores, the early learning goals, that's measured across seventeen different indicators and there are, in some of those measures, we do really well in Leeds and in some of them we do fairly poorly. And the ones that we um don't perform as well in tend to be around literacy and numeracy. Um and that's why we've had more of a focus on those issues over the, over the last um year or eighteen months. So our strategy around Leeds Year of Reading and the work that we've done um with the book trust is entirely about getting children, young people, families, communities um reading much better. I guess some of the challenges in some of our communities are about the level of disadvantage that those communities face, but also the fact that many of those communities are, the population is growing and many of those children have English as an additional language. Um what we do see reflected in the annual standard report, I think, is that whilst there are those gaps there and we will, we will continue tirelessly to improve them, actually, when you go through, then go through the key stages through to key stage four, we see, as councillor Prior pointed out, quite a significant amount of catch-up and progress so that we are um much more in line with national and certainly better than many of the core cities. So I think um we will continue to concentrate on that early years um part of the world, because actually if we can improve that further and children make the same sort of progress through the other key stages, then we'll see quite significant improvement.
Okay, I think we're touching also on a massive area of debate about appropriate measurements of children at that key, in that area as well, aren't we? It's, it's always a very interesting area of discussion and debate from the professionals working with very young children and how, how best to make sure they're ready to move forward to learn when they go on into school and beyond. Um any further comments? Um conscious it's crossed over both portfolios. Um councillor Prior, do you want to come back just to finish off the report?
No, I don't think I have anything to add. I'm delighted when there are questions for councillor Venas on my report, of course, but no, no, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Um so with those final comments, can we um agree the recommendations of the final report? And that brings the public part of our meeting to a close. So can I just ask that everyone does take seriously the need to take something of a, a break over the next few weeks over the summer? It has been incredibly intense period for everyone going forward and we're going to have to be, um make sure that we're fully charged, recharged by the autumn to really pick up the, the ongoing and major issues that are facing us all. And again, thanks to everyone for the work that you've been doing over the last um three to four months of unprecedented nature. Um we have to actually come out of this meeting and re-enter the, the private part of the meeting. So if I could ask you all to do that, we'll see you in a moment in the next, next meeting. Thank you.